August thirteenth, twenty twenty four, meeting of Christiansburg Town Council took order. Before we proceed, we have a request from Mr. Wilson to join us via telephone. He is traveling on the west coast. So do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Madam Clark.
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Hello, it's five oh, thank you. Tim, can you hear us okay?
I can, thank you.
Alrighty. We'll take a moment of reflection as we always do prior to the meetings to certainly keep the family of the young deputy sheriff in Smith County that was tried to kill over the weekend. And anyone else that you know that may be hurting or suffering and want need to lift up in words. Thank you. If you will, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on. We have two public hearings tonight. A rezoning request from JTCI Electric LLC property owner and Joseph Iskander. Did I get it close? Applicant to rezone property located on west side of Depot Street Northwest, also adjacent to the south side of four oh one Depot Street. Tax parcel two fifty six dash A dash one five eight parcel number is oh seven oh six six six, consisting of approximately point two five four acres from R two family residential to B three general business. The property is designated as residential on future land use map of the two thousand thirteen Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone here to address this issue? Hearing none, I will close that public hearing. Conditional use permit request by JTCI Electric LLC property owner and Joseph Askender applicant to allow one residential dwelling unit apartment on the second floor of proposed general office, the B three general business district. Property located west side of Depot Street Northwest and adjacent to the south side of four oh one Depot Street Northwest. Same tax numbers and same tax parcels IDs, consisting of approximately point oh five four acres. The property is designated as residential in the future land use map of the two thousand thirteen Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone here to address this issue? We did have one citizen comment on this particular rezoning request. I object to the rezoning of four oh three Depot Street from residential R two to business B three. This lot is one quarter acre, which is way too small for business. Most of the houses in this area are on one quarter acre lots. They want to build a medical slash staff office plus an apartment on the second floor. If it is rezoned B three business and down the road he sells the property, who knows what kind of business will be there. Also, he says a partial, an apartment will be used, people training, people trained. So with no permanent resident, you will never know who will be there and for how long. They will be there, how long they will be there. Again, I think it's, this lot is way too small for small business. The zoning commission or planning commissions voted no to rezon, to the rezoning. So I hope that you will also do the same thing and assign Lisa Whited, thirty three Lehigh Court. Any other comments? It was, they, they, three to one against. Or one in favor and three against. So how are you going to put it?
Three against.
Three against, yes. So they voted not to, not to do this. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearings. We have a consent agenda, approval of the minutes from July twenty third. Approval of the purchase, a purchase order Sheehy Ford in Richmond for a hundred and two thousand, one hundred and fifty two dollars for two police patrol cars. Approval of safe street and roads for all SS four A grant, grant application, grant agreement. Approval of the community flood preparedness fund, CFPF grant agreement. Set public hearings for August the twenty seventh for council's intention to adopt a resolution or resolutions regarding the proposed financing and development, renovation, equipping, and improvement of the town's wastewater treatment facilities in part of the issuance of a general obligation bond to be issued in the principal amount not to exceed eighteen point six million dollars.
I would like to make a motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you separating one of them?
Yeah, I'm separating.
So that's when you should have.
I'm sorry.
Alright, well, I'm gonna go through these. Set a public hearing on September the twenty fourth. Rezoning request by Robert Fraylon, registered agent for FB Land LP applicant and property owner to, to rezone property located on the west side of Moose Drive Northwest, at College Street Northwest Intersections, parcel five fifty six A dash nine. Parcel number ID is oh oh eight oh nine five, consisting of approximately sixteen point three acres from A agriculture to B three general business and B three general business to R three multifamily residential. Residential. The property is designated as residential on the future land use map of the two thousand thirteen Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Set town council public hearing for September the twenty fourth for a conditional use permit on the same, on the same properties to construct a hundred and sixty two apartments in the proposed R three family residential district. Property is designated residential on the future land use map.
Make a motion that we approve all the items except item C, please.
Item C, which is.
Approve all the safe streets and roads for all, we're in agreement.
Okay. Alright. So we have a motion and a second for everything except item C? Any discussion?
One second.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Do I have a second?
I have a second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clark?
And all the items except C.
We're gonna, we're gonna address C separately, I think, right after this, is that correct? Okay.
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman, woman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Nay.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
Okay, that's fine, well, thank you. That, that carries. Approval of the safe streets and roads for all SS four A, which is the abbreviation of the grant agreement. Got a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, so the reason why I wanted to separate is because I have questions regarding this and I don't, I don't know how I feel about it. It seems like, maybe explain it to me if I'm wrong, is that where it's gonna cost us thirty thousand dollars to get the grant, right?
Correct.
And then, but I don't understand why to, I know that we'll get like a hundred and something thousand, but why to spend the thirty thousand dollars when we have police and fire department and all these agencies that can tell us that information, wouldn't they?
The study would help, I guess, with pedestrian planning, things like that. Also, it would help, I think, with getting grants in the future as well for pedestrian accommodations.
So it will help us get grants, so we are spending thirty thousand dollars out of tax pay money to be able to see we can.
It would help identify projects that we would seek, seek grants for.
Any other comments or questions? I'm sorry, do you have any general question?
No, I think that was it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, Mr. Wilson?
The understanding is that the money that's received from those grants would then go towards streets and sidewalks in areas of where there are low income and people of minority? Is that, was that what I read? Did I understand that?
I, I believe that is requirement of the, the grant.
Councilwoman Bowman, you're correct. That's part of the criteria for this grant. What this grant does, it's very similar to just like the, the CFPF grant that we approved. We have to have an action plan, so we have to do a study. The study will generate a list of projects that we, that we could then in the future apply to the same federal funding source to, for implementation of those projects. And those are some of the criterias. It could be sidewalks, it could be improvements to traffic signals. It could be, it could be mass transit type. It, it covers just about every depth and breadth of, of intermodal type transportation.
I guess I didn't understand where a study of trying to find out where the most minority accidents should cost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, what we can call the police station or the rescue squad, so.
There, there's, there's more to it than just the, the minority piece and disenfranchised areas to it. The, the grant will allow for, basically the study will allow for us to, we, we, per the federal requirements in this grant, we have to do the study. If you don't do the study and, and create the action plan, you can't apply for the, for the SS four A implementation grants.
And then the grants would be used for?
Those type of implementation projects for, to improve the transportation networks. It could be signals, it could be bus stops, it could be additional sidewalk projects. It could be transportation type projects to support other areas.
It would be those kind of areas.
Absolutely.
And the study would help you to identify the areas.
Yes, you, you have to.
Things would be implemented.
Yes, ma'am, you have to identify those and they have to be in an approved plan before you could apply for, for project funds.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Monica. Any other questions? Tim, you okay? Yep, I guess he is.
Yeah, I'm good.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, and we've had discussion. Madam Clark?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Under introductions and presentations, we have the Cure Agency to present on tourism, marketing analysis and recommendations.
Thanks, Christina. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Thank you so much for having me. I look forward to presenting information on tourism today. We were brought in by the Montgomery County Tourism Office to provide strategic, strategic recommendations on brand messaging and marketing activities, a lot of which applies to the town of Christiansburg. So I appreciate the time that you guys are providing today. Our agency reviewed over thirty plus historical documents provided by the tourism office. These are past reports, analysis, data aggregations. We looked at analysis of like communities, communities up in New York, communities in Pennsylvania, communities that are very similar to this area and region. We also did twenty plus stakeholder interviews with community members and businesses here in Christiansburg, in Blacksburg, across the county. And we also did a few community visits and conversations with facility members. This is a picture of myself and my business partner, Casey Hayes, at the Aquatic Center. What we found in our analysis should come at no surprise to you all. We found unclear transit and recreational infrastructure, a town and county identity fragmented, opportunities for the university to grow in community collaboration, lack of marketed differentiators. All of these are common issues across multiple destination marketing organizations. But what we also heard in this process was this, that Christiansburg is not being represented. We heard this from your community members, we heard this from your businesses, and we heard this from you all. We analyzed for the past five plus years, every minute of every council meeting where you guys mentioned tourism, and this was constantly being said over and over again at these same seats. And you probably don't hear this much from this podium, but I, myself and my team agree with you all that Christiansburg is not being represented. Your story is not being told afar and it's not being told locally. But I'd be remiss if I just ended the presentation here without the recommendations that we offered and, and potentially a way forward. We're really excited to present these findings. So again, part of our work with the county was to provide strategic recommendations on marketing. You all have so many things to be proud of, so many things that could be marketed from afar. But we wanted to really highlight three respectable areas. These three pillars, transportation and connectivity, pillar two, innovation and technology hub, and pillar three, group getaways, are where really, we really see your town and Blacksburg shining together. As we look at the first pillar, transportation and connectivity, the goal to highlight transportation to a destination, the ease of transportation while visiting, and transportation as a recreation. So in layman's terms, how do we get there? How do we get around? And for those who enjoy recreation in transportation like biking, how do we do that? The second is innovation and technology hub, to showcase technology as a differentiator in the quality of a visitor's experience, both affiliated with the county's anchor university, but throughout the towns. We know that you all have businesses that are really trying to highlight this specific pillar here. But we also know that this is, in the recent months or years, isn't where Christiansburg is anchoring in this. You all have been doing this time and time again. And really anchoring in this pillar will allow us to showcase and attract a specific demographic, which we'll talk about here shortly. The third pillar, last but not least, and where we really think Christiansburg shines in this is multi-day and group travel, to highlight facilities and activities which exist to specifically draw groups for conferences, retreats, and sports tournaments, swim meets, et cetera. How do we get that family coming in for, how, how do we actually get the association to bring their tournaments to our town? How do we get that family going to that tournament to add a day or two on either end of their travel to really utilize the incredible world-class facilities and offerings that Christiansburg has to offer? Now, we know that these recommendations look really great on paper. We know that. But we really know you all are trying to push towards this for your citizens. The why of tourism, not just to tell an incredible story, but the impact. A World Travel and Tourism Council article came out recently talking about the impact of tourism. Talks about for every dollar invested in tourism, the economy can generate about one point five to three point five X on economic output. And this is really where we want you all to thrive. But there is a story that we need to tell, and there's actually multiple stories we could tell. And the conversation today is the story of coming together with the towns of Blacksburg, Christiansburg, under Montgomery County in the banner of tourism. Again, we heard from you all multiple times in council meetings, we heard from your businesses, from your citizens, that Christiansburg was not being represented, our story is not being told. And this is true, and the latter part of this presentation talks about how do we actually do this? But I want to share some data on what happens if we tell the story separately. Here is a, a table of data presented for Blacksburg keywords, Christiansburg keywords. So these are keywords of users across the United States searching for the keywords in these first two columns. Blacksburg is in the first column, Christiansburg is in the second. The volume of the traffic coming into those keywords are in the third column for Blacksburg, Christiansburg in the fourth. And at the very last column is the difference, and the difference is all positive to Blacksburg. So if we look at this line by line of interests, of searches that people are currently doing, we can see that the awareness of Blacksburg outtrumps all of Christiansburg. And I think this is part of what you all feel as well, of our, we're not being represented, no one knows about us. But I will say currently, the pull to Blacksburg allows Christiansburg to thrive. In another one of our data research studies, we saw that forty-five percent of the hotels in this county are in Christiansburg. And when you tell the story together, the visitor coming in does not know if the hotel that they're staying in is truly in Blacksburg or Christiansburg. But it allows them to utilize it in either case, and they were coming for Blacksburg, but they're staying for Christiansburg. And again, your sentiment of Christiansburg is not being represented is still true in this. And this is where we can start talking about how do we make that story come together? So how do we actually do this? And this is a lot of the comments you all have made over the past five years of, we're looking for this, we're looking for that. We've broken it down into three areas. The first is integrated campaign. How do we change the perception of the outside visitor of our area? How do we really introduce the story to them? The second is visitor experience guides. When they come to our area, actually even before that, how do they ensure that their visit is going to be successful? Do they have all the amenities they're looking for? Can they charge their EV car on sites? The third is how do we activate your community to ensure that this story is true across the board? We recently put out a thirty second Olympic spot on TV for the Olympics. This is utilizing a campaign that our agency created, but we worked in collaboration with a local news station to actually produce this clip. I'd love to play it for you all and then talk about the implementation.
In Montgomery County, we're not just a place, we're a point of view. We're committed to our community, from our restaurants and shops to coffee and concerts. We love local. We have an eye for adventure. With hundreds of miles of trails and rivers, it's easy to get around and get out of town. And we celebrate the spirit of sports. Our love of the game may just be unmatched. We're more than a place, we're a point of view. We're proud to be Montgomery County.
So what you just saw is now out in the wild, but what I'm about to showcase here is not. When we're trying to change the perception of an outside visitor to our area, we need to ensure we're telling the story seamlessly across all mediums. So they see, they have seen that clip on their TV, they go to their phone and it is now showing in an advertisement. And this campaign that we put together almost i- in a, in a very rapidly accelerated way, is a point of view showcasing the collaboration between Blacksburg and Christiansburg. And every, every produced media that you see here is created with your current assets. We did not go out and film anything, these are all created with your current assets that your town has, that Blacksburg has. So once we change the perception of the outside visitor, how do we ensure that their stay is successful? One of which is creating archives and aggregation lists of all of the important aspects of a good visit. From a list of EV stations to trails, art walks, bike rentals, car rentals, sporting facilities. How do we ensure all of these are documented and put out there for the visitor to experience before coming? And then how do we activate them to utilize these guides on site? This also includes really equipping your current businesses, hotels, restaurants to utilize the same language. So as the visitor comes on site, we're telling the same story, the exact same way. Lastly, we need to ensure that this goes far well into the future. And a very beautiful campaign and a quick guide is not gonna fix the problems that we have here. But there are multiple ways forward from this, from a comprehensive audit of all marketing materials to the alignment of the two towns and all of the assets. This right here is the activation of ensuring that the story of Christiansburg is told in the way that you all want to see it and one that is effective. So our next steps here is really how are we gonna tell this story in coming together? There's an immense amount of ROI in tourism, as you all know. You all have invested great amounts over the past years, and we want to ensure that comes to life in that ROI. So as you guys go and, and look to make next decisions around tourism, I greatly appreciate the decisions that you all have to make. But the stories need to be told, and right now, they can't be told for either town. Each town is on pause until we figure out if the story being told in the future is one of collaboration or of one of separation. Thank you for your time. I would love to answer any of your questions and thank you.
You know, then I have, and I might have missed it, that we, your name, did we catch your name and what your organization does?
Yes, definitely.
I might have missed that.
Yeah, I, I think I was so excited to jump straight, straight in. My name's Alex Brito, I'm the partner of Cure. And we do growth digital marketing for multiple tourism offices. We had the privilege of working with the Shenandoah Valley Tourism Partnership over the past five years, being their agency of record, bringing together over ten DMOs in aligned collaboration for campaigns of what you just saw.
And these are your recommendations were made to the Board of Tourism?
To the Board of Tourism of Montgomery County. Yes, sir.
So what is the status on this at this point? Are you wanting to hear something from us or are we wanting to hear something from tourism or any of them?
The, the board has.
Mayor, can I interject?
Certainly.
So, is it, are we to understand that you are currently hired by the Montgomery County Tourism to do what you're doing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have eleven months left worth of paying the Montgomery County Tourism out of our last budget. Right? So if you wanna know, my, this is my position. If you wanna know whether or not we agree to the Blacksburg-Christiansburg combined thing, you've got about six months to prove to us that you can do something no one else has done. Because we look for our next budget in, in about seven or eight months. So if you've already been hired, just think that the, the I, at least of my peers, is gonna sit here and tell you, yeah, I'll switch because I think you got something going on. You put a bunch of paperwork, you put a bunch of work on, on paper, on screen. But I, I, I wanna see action. If you show us something, if you show me something that says that, that you can do what has not been done. I, I never wanted to go away from tourism. I want tourism to represent Christiansburg. And I'm not sure who the twenty businesses or thirty businesses you talked to and all. I didn't even know you were in town doing any type of survey in our town. So it's quite interesting that, that you got all this information from citizens and businesses. And, and I'm fairly certain none of my peers on the council realized before tonight that you were doing it either, so.
Yes, sir.
Not a great way to do it.
I, I really appreciate your, your comments, and, and I would say, I agree. I will say that your comments to see what has not been done before should be unpacked. And I would love to unpack that with you, with my team. I think that is really where we need to come together in collaboration to figure out what the impact of the story that we're trying to tell is. We need a, a bullseye to hit. Currently, that could be multiple initiatives. But I, I, I wish you were here so I could shake your hand and, and ask those exact questions of what would.
You'll have an opportunity. I, I, I don't, I don't steer away from that. Because your keyword slide just said everything that we said while we finally voted to, to pull out of the Montgomery County Tourism Budget. Right? And, and, and just think about it from our perspective, managing the dollars of our taxpayers, which you, you know, you've heard us talk about tonight, is that we, we have to be very good about what we do with our citizens' tax dollars.
Yes, sir.
And, and if, if you attract people to Black. And, and if, if you attract people to Blacksburg and they go out and stay at our hotels because we got all the hotels, then why are we paying to attract people to Blacksburg?
Yes, sir, that, that, that is a great story. And again, I came here today to present mainly because we agree with Christiansburg is not being represented. And if Christiansburg were to back out, that in itself would exacerbate that issue.
We've already backed out. We just have to pay you for eleven more months.
Do we actually, and that's like-
That's how you do the thing, right?
You said it. Okay, Mr. Tim, can I speak for a second?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that, uh, I really would like Randy to look into actually what does the contract say? Uh, do we actually have to really pay for those eleven months? Especially because some of the words and stuff in the contract don't really say that we have to, from what I can read. I also would like to continue to listen. And then I also want to find out, I know David Rottenizer is no longer with tourism, which is leaving us with, you know, with the head person. So were you hired? Because I didn't catch that. Were you hired or are you looking to be hired by tourism? And where is your residence today? Where is your office? Do you work for somebody?
Yes, ma'am.
What's your job?
We were hired by the county tourism board to present these recommendations. This presentation here and all current activities are just in to present, present our current strategic recommendations. We don't have a contract moving forward, but we do, we have worked with multiple DMOs and we see the potential ROI that you all can capture. Everything as counsel and Tim has been saying is true. You all need to see the results, but to see the, to see the results, we have to tell the story in the right way. So what you all have seen in the past is not what I am proposing here. It is a true collaboration of the two towns, not just the activities of marketing tourism. Our businesses residence is in Richmond, Virginia. And what, what was the other question you had, ma'am?
I, I do have another question that came up to me. You're saying that you're being paid to do, give us these recommendations. What, what was the cause of your services?
What was the-
Was the cost of your services?
Cost.
Costs? I'm not sure of those numbers right now, ma'am, but they were provided under the ARPA funding. We were one of the three projects done by the county for this. So it was paid for by the ARPA funding that the county received.
Randy, I would really like to know what that came from.
So if I'm not mistaken, we voted in, I want to say February or, or January to put them on notice. So we actually, we don't have another eleven months to pay. We've only got about five months or, Tim, I think six months. And then, you know, that's when we're out totally and-
Yes, sir.
Need to make those decisions. So, uh, and I looked at the wording on the contracts and I, I don't think there's a question as to whether we have to pay or not.
Actually, I did afford those to Reed and I guess if he'd want to get an opinion from him in regard to that, that's fine. And I'll also point out that we've got tourism on the work session agenda next Wednesday.
I would like to have Reed look into the, um-
Well, it's, uh, he's done that. Randy's asking to do that, so that confirms what we're doing.
So were you asking for permission from us?
Would, would you want him to be at, at the work session? Or would you want to him to speak to it, to it now? How, how would you, I don't know if he's comfortable with it since, uh- Well, I just pulled up some, some of my notes. It looks like the letter went out on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. So if you go by the terms of the agreement, I think it said twelve months in advance for withdrawal unless the participant fails to appropriate funding, so.
We don't have to appropriate funding.
I'm not clear what that means, but-
And you, uh, and you all need a better research for-
Sure.
Okay.
Alex, I have a quick, are you on the Montgomery County payroll? Are you on Montgomery County's payroll?
Payroll?
Your payroll?
Yes, sir. For, for-
Do, do you work for Montgomery County?
Yes, our project is-
You know, he, he, he's a contractor, Sam. He, he's just got contracted to come in and do this survey and then come tell us what we know.
Tim, I know that. I want him to say that.
Yes.
Thank you.
That is, that is, that is true. Thank you.
You can tell tourism is a touchy subject on this council.
It i- it is very touchy.
And it's, uh, you know, it's something that we, I don't think people realize how much we rely on the tourism dollar. I was at a conference in Abingdon, a small town, very similar to the BML conference that we go to, and there were small towns there that I'd never seen at BML before. And they're all marketing said, well, you know, down in Big Stone Gap, we do this trail or down in, you know, Damascus, we do this, we do that. And I said, you know, I don't have a damn thing to see in Christiansburg, but I got enough hotels and motels and restaurants that I can feed you and have you anywhere you want to go in the area in thirty minutes. That's what I'm looking for. That's what, I mean, we don't have rivers, we don't have waterfalls. We have some great facilities, but the people want to just-
Yes, Mr. Mayor. What, what you said is exactly what we, is the story we want to tell, that the world right now does not know that you all have the world-class facilities, the hotels to offer. And it is not just for your residents. Staycations are fantastic, but it is for the driving destinations. It is for the visitor afar to utilize those. And in conversations also with businesses, we understand that currently some of those assets are being underutilized. You see it in your council notes. And we, that is really the goal of tourism, to ensure the utilization of your world-class facilities, your hotels and businesses.
I was a little bit confused as far as like when you were talking about like the, the searches. Obviously, Virginia Tech is going to be searched-
Yes, ma'am.
A lot more because they have a Virginia Tech University. They got the whole Keysteam and it's a well-recognized university all around the country. People from all over the world come to this university-
Yes, ma'am.
Because it's one of the best. And so we are just grateful to be right next to it. Obviously, you know, anything that goes on with Virginia Tech, it really helps Christiansburg. So as far as the search information or whatever, I think even without having to do a study, we can definitely tell that Blacksburg is always going to be searched no matter what.
Yes, ma'am.
And I mean, even in the news, if you look at the weather stuff or whatever, it's always Blacksburg that will, unless we have something really about like a flood or something, Christiansburg will-
You, you are, you are totally right. And there's two points I would love to make about this, is it is easier to tell a story to an audience that is already there than one that isn't. And that is what Blacksburg has to offer you all is an audience. And again, I fully agree with you all that they will continue to use your hotels and facilities, but there is going to be a drop-off of being inspired to use and the knowledge to utilize those facilities because they will no longer be out and about in the places that we're trying to reach with the demographics that we're trying to captivate. And that is the story we have here today is not the, will they come and utilize it? The answer is yes, if they're coming to Virginia Tech, but is how do we get someone to say, I have to come to Virginia Tech for a family weekend? Oh, by the way, I saw this incredible article on Christiansburg Tourism XYZ about this business, about this place that I have to take a picture of. That is exactly what you all are looking for, is the, how do we inspire people to utilize our current assets? And that would be missing if this partnership continues in separation. Blacksburg will tell the story that they need to tell without you all. And I want to ensure that your town has opportunity to tell the story it needs to tell afar.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Just a couple for me, real quick. So I just wanted to confirm that I understood correctly that when you were doing your study, you were reviewing our past council meetings from the last several years, anytime we discussed tourism-
Yes, ma'am.
And taking some of those comments into consideration. Okay, I just wanted to confirm I heard that correctly. And then I also, I think what some of the concerns that you're hearing are that people just want to know that your opinion is unbiased. Can you just confirm, this is an unbiased opinion? You're just simply providing, you're an outside source contracted to come in and provide strategic recommendations? Is that correct?
Officially, yes, but I have a bias that I love the state of Virginia and the partnership that you all have with Blacksburg provides this part, this region of Virginia to thrive. And without that partnership, it will not. So the bias does come from, I want to see you all thrive within our whole ecosystem of tourism. And that can't be the case if you guys can't tell your story afar.
Agreed. And I, you know, a lot of what you said resonates with me. It confirms things that I have believed about regional tourism for a long time, but I know I don't personally want to just be confirmed that this is right. Like I would like to be challenged and told that, you know, I would like someone to say, yes, it's worth going out on your own. No, it's definitely a bad idea. Like I want, I'm open to all of those recommendations. And so I guess my last question for you is just after this study. So is this study resulting in work for your company? Does it result in a strategic plan? Does it result in a list of next steps for our future tourism director? What's kind of the next step with your company's involvement?
Yes, ma'am. We currently do not have any continued contracts. Most of the recommendations we've been given past, these recommendations have been pro bono for the sake of seeing you all continue to tell the best story you can. We would love to continue this partnership with you all if you would have us. We've had conversations with, with folks that agree with that, but again, the decision is for you all. And I, and I again greatly appreciate that decision you all have to make, but our agency does not have any continued contracts past this recommendation that we have.
I do have a question. You said-
Yes, ma'am.
That this things were pro bono, was pro bono?
Um, pro, pro bono is when there's no-
I know when there is no charge. I know the answer for that, but I asked you before, what was, what were you charging for the services? And you said that you don't know, but then you're saying that you're providing the services. Am I missing something?
I, I, I think he's going beyond what the contracts have called for by, by coming to meetings and then kind of continuing to work, work past what the contract required for is what, what he means.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Next is our citizens' comments section. Allow the opportunity for three minutes to come to, uh, address council, podium, name an address, limit your time to three minutes and your comments to the chair.
Paul Laitner, one sixty, Alexa Lane. I'm not sure if my comments are going to be relevant to what you guys are just talking about, but it seems like Christiansburg as a destination, we do a really good job for the sports fields and the aquatic center. And I presume the same thing will happen with Huckleberry, with the soccer and football fields. I don't know if we advertise that. I don't know who you would advertise it to, but that's something we have to offer that's sort of unique to Christiansburg.
I, I think the, uh, we got the park that Huckleberry opened late in, or late summer, early fall. So I think they're now gearing up to start going out to recruit the soccer and lacrosse tournaments for the fall season coming up. So they, they, we've had a couple, they've been well-received, but they're really going to start the marketing part of it, probably starting on it now to start lining some of these tournaments up.
Now, just if I can just say something to, to what you were saying. The aquatic center, we do also pay someone, one of the employees, is that correct? That helps a lot with their recruiting and, and all these things. What's the person's name? I mean, there, we do have-
We have a competition director who goes out and lines these things up. We've had that on staff since, just about since we opened, so, oh, yeah. And we see that benefit of having someone designated in that particular sport. And we do a nice job with recruiting the baseball and softball tournaments all summer. We'll run thirty-eight to forty. So we're now looking to, once, now that we, we're kind of like a dog chasing a car. We've caught that park and we're not sure what to do with it now, but I think it will be highly used without question. Anyone else?
Christine Waltz, thirteen seventy Rigby Street. I'm calling, or I'm asking that town council revisit its sign ordinance. I wanted to read to you what a sign is according to your ordinance. Sign means any object, device, display, or structure or part thereof visible to the public from a public right of way, that's a street, which is designed and used to attract attention by means involving words, letters, figures, designs, symbols, fixtures, logos, colors, illumination, or projected images. The term sign does not include flags or define herein animated sign. And these are prohibited everywhere in the town of Christiansburg, not just in business districts, but everywhere. An animated sign means a sign or a part of a sign that is designed to rotate, move, or appear to rotate or move. Such a sign is sometimes referred to as a moving sign. The reason I find this a little bit problematic is it is prohibited everywhere. This means at Halloween, when people start to project ghosts on their house, they're violating your sign ordinance. If somebody is projecting those snowflakes for holiday decorations, they're violating your ordinance. I'm sure that when the people who made this ordinance came up with it, they were probably doing their very best and maybe back then we didn't sell the projecting images over in Home Depot or Lowe's, but we have them now and it would be a shame to basically be the Grinch and outlaw these ornamentations and decorations for the holidays. I know a lot of people enjoy, I know I enjoy going through the neighborhoods and seeing all these decorations. So I'm going to ask, I know Joanna, Kim, and Sam, you agree with me that probably revisiting the sign ordinance would be a horrible thing, but if I could get Tanya, Tim, or Casey to potentially relook at it, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Beth Humberger, nine one five College Street. In regards to, well, I've been meaning to think, I'm really glad to live in this town. I walk out of town hall, I get really good service, I, I get good answers and helps me to figure out my solutions to whatever I might want to do. And so there's a lot of benefits to living in Christiansburg. And we have really good people who give hours and hours and hours of their time in community service to make things happen in this town. So my question is, when you're talking about that, um, the thing that he's doing, which looks pretty good to me, but do we, when I go to look up a place when I'm going to go somewhere, I look it up and I look local restaurants that are interesting, ice cream shop that's interesting, neat parks. So when we go along, we stop somewhere and we might do one of those activities. Is there something like that for Christiansburg? I've, I've looked it up sometimes, but like the Montgomery Museum, I encourage people who travel through to stop there. It's a good place to stop, has picnic tables or even the Montgomery, uh, garden, I'm talking about garden, or the Montgomery Museum. But we have, we have all these amenities here in town. We have a lot of amenities, but is there a place where you could look that up? Would, would they provide that service to make that clear about what we have to offer? And I love the idea of working with Blacksburg because we're almost, I mean, a lot of people that work at tech live in Christiansburg. So anyway, thoughts? And I do like, love living here.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll close citizens' comments, committee reports. Do we have any reports committees have met over the last, what, two? Business?
No, the program is still going. I hope people apply without deficits and then we have meetings coming up very soon. Twenty-eight, six o'clock or something.
Tim, you got anything?
I do not.
Very good. We'll move on to discussion and action by mayor and council. We have a resolution for, for adoption of rescue reserve revenue recovery reserve increase rate increases.
Motion to approve.
Motion seconds to approve. Any discussion?
What was the amount again?
Oh, it's spread out to, uh, it's going from one, from a hundred and thirty percent to seventy percent.
Rescue goes from a hundred and thirty to a hundred and seventy percent.
Any other comments? Madam clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That is six oh, thank you. Resolution for adoption of fire revenue recovery rate increases.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. Discussions. Madam clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
Very good. Very good, motion carries. Resolution for appointment of zoning administrator Randy Wingfield.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in several seconds. Uh, any comments or questions?
I had, um, voting on this before, and then I'll continue to run on.
Okay.
But-
Any suspicious theories?
Oh, I just feel like it should come to town council straight.
Madam Clerk- Oh, sorry, go ahead.
You mean like we shouldn't have a zoning administrator, uh, and a, a subdivision agent?
I, this was regarding the same things that we discussed in the last council meetings, and my vote was no, and I'll continue to-
That was a diff, that's a different one, this is if there is a zoning appeals, like someone wants to, a zoning administrator, then go to the zoning appeal boards if they don't want to put Sid, but we have to have a zoning administrator.
Thought that we needed to have one.
Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That is four oh and two extensions, appointment of subdivision agent Rheta Jackson, I believe, Randy, you have recommended this to-
Correct.
Fill the, one of the slots located by Mr. Warner.
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, comments, questions?
Who was for you, or who wasn't, who was the person?
Rheta Jackson, the planning director.
I care, I like her a lot too, by the way, but I just, I feel like the same way.
Madam Clerk, she's here, she's in Black's, you can't see her.
It's nothing personal.
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That is four oh and two extensions, thank you. Staff reports, town manager?
Uh, the Touch a Truck event is this Saturday, uh, the seventeenth, from ten to three at Uptown Christiansburg, August twenty-fourth will be Heritage Day downtown from ten to four, and also on the twenty-fourth is the Dialogue on Race, uh, Summer Summit at Christiansburg Huckleberry Park, uh, just to remind everybody of the council work session, uh, next Wednesday, uh, that's in regards to tourism and the county fire and rescue request, uh, just want to clarify, does council want Reid at the work session in regards to tourism or not?
I think already good.
Well, it, either that or I think if he has had a chance to read the, the contract and give us a firm, definite maybe, as he always does, I mean, give us a firm response that, you know, I think, I think we're within the rights on the contract, but anyway, now, if he wants to, uh, I mean, i- if, if, Randy, I would, I would ask the council to leave it up to you if you think Reid needs to be here.
Maybe he has his time.
I think there's some, I think there's some room for discussion.
Okay, so you're going to come?
He does have his-
Very good, very good. Is that pro bono? Oh, good. Anything else, Randy?
And, uh, had a request from an adjoining property owner, uh, we recently took off, took offline the Silver Lake, uh, sewer pump station on Silver Lake Road, uh, it's basically a piece of property that we own now, it's fifty by fifty, so very small, point, uh, zero five acres is the area on it, the adjoining property owner would know, wants to know if we would mind disposing of it, it's actually the property owner, the family that we bought it from in the sixties, who's, who's asked to obtain it. Uh, engineering and public works doesn't really have any, any particular use for the property, and considering it's only fifty by fifty, you know, it's, it's so small, like I say, it's pretty much just big enough for the pump station, is about the size of it.
And it's offline, they are all-
Yeah, yes, correct, and there's-
Fifty feet or fifty?
Fifty feet by fifty feet is, is the dimension of it.
So, he wants us to give it to him?
Well, he, just dispose, dispose of it, um, I, I-
Give it to us.
I would, I would disp, to be honest, I would propose that you do it by sealed bid, uh, just basically advertise it and take bids for it, and, uh, you don't have to take a sealed bid, you're not obligated to take a sealed bid, correct? If you, if, you, you could reject it if you wanted to.
So I think the letter stated that he, he asked if, if a figure were available.
He, he just basically asked if we, if we had any interest in getting rid of it.
Since we bought it from his family to start out with, and he landlocks it.
But he doesn't landlock it, but he strands, he strands on, I guess, the, the light in the rear.
Okay, all right, so we, go ahead and put it out?
Like I say, we don't really have any objection to it, so, uh, I, I will, if there's no objection, I'll advertise it for sealed bid.
Okay.
That's what I was going with that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all I've got.
Mr. Broden? Yeah, the staff. Council reports, Mr. Bishop?
No report.
Ms. Hicks?
Just a program.
Okay. Ms. Hockett?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Jenkins?
Nothing to report.
Ms. Doman?
Nothing.
Mr. Wilson?
Nothing.
Very good. Is there any other business to come before council?
No, sir.
If not, we are adjourned.
Thank you.